All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, May 26. It's a remote participation only, so I'm going to read the Governor Baker's order again. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspended certain provisions of the meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 13th, 2020 order, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. Students, this meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information is the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the Town of Norton's website. That's www.nortonma.org. For the meeting, members of the public who wish to participate may do so in the following ways. First, it's drawn online by video by clicking the Zoom link on the Norton Planning Board site at NortonMa.org. Call in only, just call 646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 6391519600. And to join through the Zoom app, please enter meeting ID 6391519600. And you may need to try multiple times to connect. You may also view this meeting on Norton Cable Access Channel 15, or the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to p-d-i-g-i-u-s-p-e at NortonMaUS.com. And additionally, you'll find moving materials at the Norton website, NortonMa.org/PlanningDashboard. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Norton website, again, www.nortonma.org, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. Never get tired of saying it. Okay. We have bills tonight, Paul?
We do not have any bills tonight.
Okay, so it looks like we do have a set of minutes from May 5. We got those late last meeting, so deliberately get a chance to pick a look. Anyone on the board with changes or additions on these?
Yes.
Hi, I have none.
Thanks, Tim. So I guess we're going to motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Julie.
This is Scott, all second.
Okay, this motion is second to approve. Roll call, Julie?
Yes.
Tim? Yes. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
And all vote yes. Okay, we have a public hearing for waiting room or states. It's HB 490. It's one of the Southwest Street, and I believe they requested a continuous during night.
That's correct, they have.
Did they give you a reason, Paul?
Yes, it's primarily because they, late last week, gave the updated material to you all, and they wanted you to have a little more time to review it. That was the primary reason. And we're also working. One of the requirements is working on a template bird agreement on the housing, so that we're still working with them on, but this would give you. All the information is still in your Dropbox, so you'll have all of the new information, plus all the old, the application and the old reviews as well.
Has the peer reviewer, you were looking at it again?
Not for traffic, because remember the traffic reviewer, peer reviewer, said everything was okay and had some conditions that they had suggested to be on the site, on the site plan. It's still going through Conservation Commission, so stormwater and wetlands are still being reviewed.
I was thinking more in terms of the circulation and the widths of the driveways and all that stuff.
Fire Department looked at it and is okay with it.
Okay, so I'm looking for motions to continue this to June 8.
So move.
That was Orin, right?
Yep.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And all vote yes. All right. Moving right along. With the, excuse me, marijuana bylaw amendment to our place. We're going to do these separate, right, the amendment and then the zoning, the zoning.
Correct, they're separate, warrant articles.
Passage.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
It appears a portion of the zoning map, a bike spread, no village, is such that I can, of the Town Council. At this point, I am able to accuse from, for the participation on, on the map, and as well, at this point, I would do it on the amendment, so I accuse myself in both of those instances.
Okay. Thank you, Orin. So what we're going to do, the same thing we do with, with everything is go around. If there's anything to present, we have some people from the IDC here, Renee and Laura, and sorry for missing the ones. Then we'll have the board ask any additional questions, and then we'll open it up to the public, so. Renee, is there anything you want to, you want to add?
Yeah, a few things, Steve, and first, if I may, because the IDC actually does have form. If I could call our meeting to order at 7:24. I have representatives on the line, myself, Renee Della, Laura Parker, Sadie Overhead, Anthony Kowadeczek, Mike Messini, and Denise Luciano. Is there anyone else from the IDC that I may have missed? Okay, great, thank you. Steve, thank you again for your time. There are a couple items that we talked about the last meeting in respect to the bylaw that I just wanted to provide updates on, some of which were questions that came back from the Planning Board and then things that we just wanted clarification from Town Council. So if I can go over those, I have eight of those listed, three of which I would identify as, as more critical in the, in respect to the responses or the changes that, that may come. So just a, a quick recap on the article. We, we spoke at the last meeting about the, the phrase adult use being included, both in the warrant language, and then there's another area on page five where it says adult use, and those have been removed from the warrant language as well as the bylaw. It was an oversight that we kept those there. Additionally, we did make the updates to the social consumption establishments, so that doesn't say, previously it said marijuana establishments, social consumption establishments of any kind, so it was a bit confusing, so we just updated that in the, in the bylaw. And I should, I probably should preface this with, this came back to us from legal counsel. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, with the exception of one item that we're going to ask for your feedback on, these will be the final changes. There's also a question within the establishment section, so 21.2. We wanted clarification on whether or not it was that the marijuana establishments or MTV, MTC shall be permitted by special permit or bylaw, and she did indicate it's by special permit, subject to limitations imposed by the bylaws, and we clarified that language there. I believe Joe brought up last time, too, that we have listed the host community agreement with the legislative body of the municipality, so we have effectively updated that to executive. And the, one item that we wanted Town Council to weigh in on was where we talked about the primary vehicular access that we want to establish off the main roadway. That was one of the things that we were looking at as a group when we were going through the zoning map. So she did come up with the language, I'd like to just read it here, and then if there are any questions or concerns from the Planning Board, we can discuss those. So the language now reads, "On sites with multiple points of ingress, principal site access shall be from the more established thoroughfares to avoid disruption of residential neighborhoods." Are there any questions on, on that specific language update?
Anyone on the board have questions on this?
Renee, on the host community agreement, I appreciate the change to, to the executive as the negotiator, but typically, on host community agreements such as pilots as well, it's ratified by the legislative, i.e. town meeting. Is that not the intent that host community will not be ratified by town meeting?
No, the host community agreement will, will be with the Board of Selectment. So there's no, that the, the template is already posted online, and we effectively could accept host community agreements at this time.
Okay.
Okay, and then Steve, if I can move on, there was a, a section that had some, and I appreciate, Orin, I know you were recusing yourself from this, but certainly appreciate all the time and feedback that you provided to us to make sure that, you know, we were, we were executing this or writing this up in the best interest of the town. So the, the question was in respect to the special permit. So we had three different sections on here, one saying that the special permit, site plan approval, would be issued to the marijuana establishment or the MTC owner. The second was that the special permit, site plan approval, would be issued for a specific type of marijuana establishment or MTC on a specific site or parcel. And then the third was that special permit, site plan approval, shall be non-transferable to either another marijuana establishment or an MTC owner. So in discussion with council, it was, it was twofold. And, and this is really, it's going to be the decision of, of the town and specifically of the Planning Board. So under 40A, the special permit issued for the site, the special permit's issued for the site and it can't be transferred to another physical location, unlike electric relations. The decision to make the special permit specific to an owner is a policy decision, and it's our decision. So if the board isn't comfortable with that, we can certainly remove that from the language. The, when we were talking about it, you know, one of the things that, that our discussion focused on was when you have a social equity participant or, and I think it's called an empowerment participant, I can't remember the exact language, I apologize, but when they go through the process, it's essentially fast-tracked through the Cannabis Control Commission for a license. And typically, what has happened is, once they are established in a town, then they're approached by many different investors who essentially want to buy them out, and then there's a, a transfer of ownership there. So because of that, and because of towns wanting to, to have more insight and more oversight of that, she said that, you know, the requirement that we had grabbed from one of the models, which shows the, the special permit being provided to the owner, is for that particular instance. So she said, her recommendation, or, or, you know, I asked her a recommendation, but she was saying, you know, for a town the size of Norton with the staff that we have, she doesn't necessarily think that having the special permit or site plan approval by the establishment owner or MTC owner is necessary. It's certainly our decision. When I asked her what her recommendation was, she said, you know, less is better. So if, if we want to know about change in ownership, she said, one of the, one of the things we can do is, as a condition of the permit, listed or any change of ownership above 50% requires an update to the Planning Board. But again, less is more, we're a small town, you know, do we want the extra work for that? So I, I know that that was a concern of the Planning Board, so I'd, I'd like, you know, certainly your, your feedback, if that's something that you would like to be removed from the, the bylaw, we can certainly remove it. And then the special permit and site plan approval would remain with the site, not the owner.
This is Tim. I think my preference would be for that option where you mentioned, where if there's a change in ownership or 50%, that the Planning Board is notified, or that the town is notified however we want, whatever the proper notification channel is. I think that's the. I think, I think I would want to know personally whether there's going to be a change in ownership and how things are going to shake out, and we can go from there.
Okay, thank you, Tim, and that was, it's a condition and a permit to address that.
I don't know if the rest of the board feels the same way or not, or. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, so then, just to reiterate, we would remove, under the issuance, transfer, discontinuation of use, the first item, which is special permit, site plan approval shall be issued to the marijuana establishment or MTC owner. And then what would remain is that the special permit, site plan approval would be issued to the specific site or parcel. Now, it, it will read, it shall be issued for a specific type of marijuana establishment or MTC on a specific site or parcel, so it couldn't, if there were a retail dispensary there, you couldn't just transfer or, or change that to a cultivator.
Anyone else on the board with questions on this?
Okay. Thank you. And then the last item was in respect to the odor mitigation. So we did, again, take this back, we had more discussion at the IDC, and we felt, again, that, that the information that we have already in the bylaw is sufficient to deal with this. So one of the things that Town Council had recommended, because she said, you know, the same, the bylaw sets a standard that there's no detectable odor at the exterior is determined by the building inspector or his reference as a need. And, you know, to agree with what Orin said, zoning enforcement is, is a challenge. She said typically what we could do is the municipality has the option of enforcing fines at $300 per day or a court order, an injunction requiring cessation of the offending behavior. So her recommendation, another option that she had provided would be to include a condition, again, in the special permit, that would provide a cultivation permit issued for a predetermined set of years. So, you know, essentially you can decide one year or two years, and renewal would be subject to the applicant demonstrating that there haven't been any complaints or issues with odor during the prior term. So I don't know if that's a, an acceptable remediation for the board.
Show that, is show still on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it. That was one of your questions, I think, right? I don't recall. Okay.
I think that may have been Orin's question.
Okay. So any, any further questions on this one? All right, excellent.
Okay.
Are you, give it.
Yeah, the only other thing I want to mention, Steve, is that we did, we did receive back, and they have been posted online, update, updated overlay documents, diagram documents. So now you see one, one set of documents show essentially a satellite view with the parcels outlined in the overlay, and then the other set shows the same locations with the zoning and then the overlay with the zoning. And those do include the update that Greg Vincent had brought to Paul in respect to two properties on Mansfield Avenue that were actually split parcels that we did not have indicated as such previously, so those have been updated.
Okay, anyone on the board with questions on these overlays or the zoning, the zoning maps? If there's nothing from the board, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's any questions for anyone here, for the public that would like to ask? Okay. All right, Renee, did you have anything else on these?
On, on the updates from the last meeting?
Yeah.
No, those were the only updates I had pertaining to the bylaw and the overlay.
Excuse me, I had to unmute myself. I have a question on the overlay.
Okay, can you just state your name and, and address?
My name is Maureen Trozinski. I reside at 283 East Main Street, unit number 15. I'm president of the Kingsbury Hill condo association. And I believe you all received our letter. My overlay is that relates to odor mitigation. I think that you need more in this bylaw than just saying, after the fact, someone could go in and see if there's odor and do something. Other communities have put restrictions on how close such manufacture, cultivation and storage facilities can be next, near highly populated areas. Since if you look at 283, look at East Main Street, whether it's 283, 274, Red Mill Village, that would be considered a densely populated area. So my question would be, why not tighten that odor mitigation to restriction of where these facilities could be located?
Do you want me to speak now, Steve?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay. Hi, Maureen, it's Renee.
Hi.
I, I did receive your letter, and it was, it's following after our last IDC meeting, so I have it on our agenda to discuss tomorrow, and then we'll certainly reach out to you. It's, I, I don't know if you were able to attend the last public hearing. While the bylaw has a section on odor mitigation, the state has, has pretty, what I would call sufficient controls as well. But what we also did is within the host community agreement, one of the things that we wanted to make sure, because we, we did, we actually had a resident who used to work for, I'm going to forget the city. I want to say maybe it was Framingham, and they had some. I'm sorry. Bellingham, thank you. I knew it was a ham, thank you, Laura. But she had also reached out to us, too, and, and gave us some information. And so the, the IDC had, we, we've talked about this three or four times, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were doing the right thing. So in addition to the, with the, the language in the bylaw, we also, also within the host community agreement, have a section called odor control technology. And it, it goes into additional detail as well. Excuse me. The concern that was, that we specifically talked about with the Planning Board last week was in respect to enforcement. And so that was one of the things why we brought it back to Town Council, and their recommendation was that, that we limit the actual length of time for the permit, so that if there is an issue and they're not mitigating that or resolving that issue to, to our standards, then we have the ability to essentially suspend or revoke the special permit. So those are, you know, when you look at it from an enforcement perspective, because we had those concerns, I, I think that, that her requirement or her option back to us, I think that that gives us more ability to respond appropriately, so that if there is an issue, it's not something that we have, you know, residents that have to deal with long-term in the town. And that was one of the reasons, oh, go ahead.
I spoke to residents from the Taunton area on 140, and there is a plant off the industrial area there near Coles in Taunton, and they have filed multiple complaints about the odor. They get the same thing, someone goes to the plant, they say, oh, we got to change the filters. The issue is, and that is residentially populated as the area on 123. And given the size of those buildings that they're putting right on top of the road on Leonard Street, and the, the areas that would be available around this end of East Main Street, I really think some consideration should be given to the citizens and taxpayers who live in this area in terms of dealing with the particular area of odor issue before it starts, which requirement of a distance from residential areas would be another benefit. Even with the two-mile or three-mile limit, you might still have to ask them to do odor mitigation, but allowing them to put these facilities in areas that are densely populated, to me, would cause, causes a, a problem, you know, rather than deal with it. Should be dealt with as you're addressing these plants.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate your feedback, Maureen. I think it's a couple of things, too, you know, we've, we've talked to some cultivators, and, and they range anywhere from 5,000 to 30,000 to 100,000. So while I think a significant facility could potentially cause more problem, you know, one of the things that, that we have to look at and be, be consistent on is, you know, we, we can't say in one area that we're going to have, have some specific provisions in not, in another area. And, you know, honestly, when I think of a, a two-mile radius, I mean, that essentially would, I, I don't know anywhere in town at that point where we would be able to have any sort of cultivation.
Well, I'm saying two-mile area that are densely populated. So if you want to set the limit on population, like X number of homes or apartments in that area, I think that it, it could be, to me, it's the, the number of homes, apartments in this area between 283, 285, Red Mill, and 274. It's the volume of the population there, which might be different on, in different areas of the town.
No, I understand, I, I appreciate that. You know, honestly, from my perspective, that if there were a problem with any resident, whether it be 100 because it's a densely populated area, or 10 on a street that isn't so densely populated, I think that it's an issue that the town needs to address. So we'll certainly, again, take that back to the IDC and review it again. As I mentioned, we, we've done that several times, and, you know, we're back to Town Council for additional advice on, on how can we ensure that, that we're able to appropriately respond if there is a problem. So I appreciate that, thank you.
How will the residents receive feedback if you do make some changes? Since we submitted a letter, would you respond back to me as the president of ours? What your decision?
Yep, I, I would respond back to you with the updates, as well as provide you, since we're all doing virtual meetings now, you'll be able to actually, I mean, you can certainly attend our meeting, we have it tomorrow night, or you can review the, the meeting afterwards, that, that's up to you. And Maureen, can I ask, ask you, do your comments, do they represent the opinions of all the residents? Or is there like a subgroup or?
No, there's not a subgroup here. Our residents are very, very angry happening on Leonard Street. The extent that those buildings are so close to the roadway, the size of those buildings, so they are extremely frustrated with the town as it stands now. I'm getting complaints already, because people can see some of the warehouses from their back porches, and they're extremely frustrated. And so this is like adding another in, in concern about what's really happening on this side of town.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can, can everyone just put yourself on mute if you're not, if you're not speaking, please?
And I have not approached 285. I understand that there are also similar concerns in Red Mill Village, and I have not, 274 is apartments, so it's really hard to get a feel for that. But I'm willing to, if down 140 in Taunton at certain times of the day, you can appreciate the concern, and they only have two developments in that area that do not have as many homes as we have in this area of East Main Street.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the bylaws or the provisions that Taunton has followed, so I can't really comment on that.
Well, I think they're similar, I mean, again, they, their odor mitig, and language to what I'm aware of is similar to what you're talking about, that filters and filters have to be changed, and fines can be levied. But that's an after-the-fact solution. We're asking you for consideration of a pre-development solution, so thank you.
And Maureen, we do have as, as part of the process as well, you know, there, there's a, a multiple-step process, one of which that will apply to all, all establishments, is the application, or I'm sorry, not the application process, but the host community agreement, and that goes before the Board of Selectment, and then goes to the Planning Board. And, and part of that, as required by the CCC, and then what we kind of piggyback off of, was making sure that we saw their mitigation plans beforehand, or their odor mitigation plans beforehand. So there will be some insight. So those are, you know, also opportunities for us to, to have a, a deeper look at it. And, you know, the, the Board of Selectment, I mean, it's, it's within their power. And, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen, I mean, it's, it's within their power on whether or not they, they enter into a host community agreement. There's nothing that says because somebody comes to the board that you have to. So, you know, certainly those issues will be discussed. And we would also look forward at that time for residents to, you know, to come forward as well once sites are actually identified.
And will we receive notification as residents prior to the issue coming before the, the Select Board?
I don't believe that there's an official process, like in a butter's notice. You know, it's, it's all under open meeting law, so it would be available. You know, I can certainly, you know, as a Selectman and also as a member of the IDC, I can certainly reach out.
Yes, we would appreciate notification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Maureen. Anyone else on here that would like to ask questions on this?
Steve, this is Tim. I think I would just say to Maureen's point that the buildings right on 123, which are part of the Leonard Street development, are currently expected to be retail buildings and those could not be used for cultivation at this time.
If I could also, that's the case because they're industrial.
Right.
They're zoned industrial.
The only three buildings were designed as retail buildings as part of the permit.
The only ones that are designed as retail are the ones right on 123. But you have those two huge warehouses now that are on 123 and they're industrial, not retail.
Right, I was speaking, I was speaking to the ones right on the road. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And Steve, if Laura can provide an update too, I think she was gonna say something on behalf of the IDC.
I was actually just asking, going to ask Renee for clarification. Correct me if I'm wrong, was it the Blue Star Development that had mortgage covenant restrictions with regards to?
There, yes, so half of, it's, I'd have to look up specifically which buildings. I want to say that the buildings on the northern, the big warehouse buildings on the northern most part, they have debt covenants. So marijuana establishments could not go into those buildings. The one, I believe the retail one where there's three buildings closest to the road and then I believe maybe another warehouse to the right of that were the only ones that would be able to have a marijuana establishment in it. So I, I think within the project itself, there are limitations as well. But I, I don't want to be quoted on that. We can certainly, you know, go back and provide that section where Jeff O'Neil talked to it with Condyne. We met with him a few weeks ago.
Steve? Yes, is that Gary?
Yes, my name is Gary Perkins and I'm the chairman of the Board of Red Mill Village. I also sent a letter in, I had seen the letter that Maureen had sent in and we, Board crafted a letter similar to hers and we have some of the same questions and concerns regarding the potential odor coming from a marijuana plant too close to all those same areas that Maureen spoke about. So all I would ask, I've listened to the conversation. All I would ask at this time is that if some type of correspondence goes out to Maureen and her organization, we'd like to make sure we get copy on that as well so that we're also aware of what's going on.
Yeah, we can do that, Gary. Again, we haven't, the IDC hasn't met yet. So we typically review the comments as a group and then myself and another member will, will reach out, either for a further discussion or just written response.
Okay. And you said your meeting tomorrow, Renee?
Yeah, yes.
So Gary, yeah, if you could get on that meeting too, that would be good.
How do I get on that meeting?
It's, it's also a Zoom session, Gary. If you go to the town website on the calendar, go see it's there for the Industrial Development Commission.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah, at 6:30 PM. Somebody correct me? Yes, I see nods, yes.
I think I have another meeting, but I'll look if I can or not.
Renee, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's this same Zoom address?
Uh, no, because it's my personal one.
Yeah, zoning boards meeting and we were told to give up this one to you all and you gave us the IDC one.
No, you couldn't, no.
Yeah. We'll have to coordinate.
It'll be on, it'll be on channel 15 as well?
I don't know. We've, we've never been on channel 15. But Paul, I can guarantee you don't have my Zoom address because it's, it's my password. It's my personal password.
Okay, we have, okay, well, we have a different one anyway. So I think it's, you're on this one tomorrow night though.
Not according to my agenda.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. You know what, it's, there's another committee meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
My apologies, not IDC.
No, that's okay. I just don't want anyone to, to go to a different meeting.
Renee, I pulled our notes from Jeff O'Neil from Blue Star. So if you go to Condyne's website and look at the Blue Star properties, it gives you outlines of plans by building number or parcel number. And according to Jeff at the last IDC meeting, only buildings two and three and it would probably have to be retail only. Those would be two of the smaller ones on 123. Those are the only two buildings that do not have financing with debt covenants that would preclude a marijuana establishment going in there. So I would hope that would be of help to Mr. Perkins and Ms. Schrezinski.
To clarify, that would be for retail marijuana, not for cultivation?
Correct, yes. So buildings two and three, I believe, are two of the three that are directly on Route 123. Lots one, four, five and seven, according to my notes, have debt covenants that do not allow a marijuana establishment to be located in those properties.
Yeah, a lot of the big banks still are going to allow it because they don't want the, the oversight vessels.
Well, we also, you also have to deal with, if they've got an FHA or some sort of federally backed mortgage, since marijuana is not legal on federal level, they will preclude it as well within their mortgage agreements. And in some cases, a lot of, especially strip malls and plazas with a large number of businesses, they will have put something together within the lease agreement for all entities that will basically restrict you so that, you know, other businesses nearby are not impacted by.
But does that include marijuana cultivation and storage, which could be done in those larger warehouse facilities, correct?
No, so none of the larger buildings. So the, the only buildings in which they can put any sort of marijuana establishment is in building two and three. Those are the two of the three buildings that are abutting or directly on Route 123. And those are currently set up for retail right now. So their indication was the only thing that was likely to be allowed with regards to a marijuana establishment within the Blue Star Business Park would be retail only.
Well, or was that retail only or could it have been the manufacturing or distribution as well?
I've got his note saying probably retail only because it would be building two and three. You're looking at storefront property. I, I can't imagine you'd want to do storage or cultivation in something like that. Definitely not a warehouse sized building where cultivation or manufacturing could take place.
Yep, but, but again, just want to be transparent that we, we have talked to, or I have talked to folks who are looking at a smaller, you know, some have indicated only 5,000 square feet for cultivation. So, you know, those warehouses are, are much, much larger. They're not all cultivate, not all cultivation facilities are looking for, you know, these large warehouses. So I just, I just want to make that, that distinguished or that separation.
If I could also just add that people that we've talked to in cultivation have also expressed a desire to not be in a high visibility area. They would prefer to be tucked in, away from, basically have not, people not knowing that they are there.
Do we have any other questions from the public here?
I have a question. This is Wendy Roberts from 54 Mansfield Ave.
Go ahead, Wendy.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Definitely.
Okay, great. I was trying to access the updated overlay map. And although I can access everything else, when I click here, I end up with a Microsoft login screen. So I can't really assess what changes have been made or have not been made. However, I would like to voice a concern with regard to the overlay map as it affects Route 140, Mansfield Ave. And that I am the last R60 lot before it becomes village commercial. And I really think there should be a buffer zone between any residential area and where any kind of marijuana establishment can be located. Perhaps, you know, this would, I'm sure this would apply to other residents as you go in higher numbers up Mansfield Ave as well. But it just seems totally improper to potentially permit either cultivation or retail establishment right next to a residential zone. Am I still connected? Hello?
Yes, you are.
Sorry, yes, yes, you are. I was reaching for my unmute button here. Anyone have thoughts on it, Renee? You want to, do you want to speak for that?
Certainly. So Wendy, I believe I have your email and I was looking at it and I believe that your concern is with the parcel specifically 56 Mansfield Avenue.
Well, at least that one, yes. I mean, there's, so there's a few lots before you get to Ma's Gas, which I think wouldn't be allowed there as village commercial anymore.
No, that is, that is within the overlay. So the overlay extends which part?
I know it's in the overlay. I understand that. But why, you know, I know that you made some concessions for the industrial area where that building has been ripped down. It used to be, I think, a Reed and Barton facility on the corner of Cross. And, and you said, no, we're not going to do it there because it's in a residential area. I would think that that same kind of logic could apply where you have a residential area and immediately next to it, you could potentially permit a marijuana establishment?
So it's twofold. Let me address the, the former Reed and Barton location. So, so when we look this, we, we look at a couple of things. One, in respect to the things that we do zone, we have to be careful that we're not doing spot zoning, right? So when we looked at Reed and Barton specifically, yes, it was industrial. But it's two parcels and it's surrounded entirely by a residential area. There is no main thoroughfare through there. So what we were focusing on, you know, as an economic development project was where in town do we have commercial business happening, right? So it's specifically when you look at Route 140, that is, that is a commercial, that is a commercial road. When you look at 123, it's a commercial road. So we focused on those areas that we already have similar uses. And, you know, we think of it from the perspective of, you know, and we've said the whole time, this isn't necessarily a zoning project. While it does have zoning implications, this is an economic development project. It's an opportunity for the town to introduce a new business. And so we focused on where do we already have these, these commercial uses taking place? And that, that was our primary focus for Route 140. And again, that Reed and Barton, because it, you know, I, I don't know how an industrial area ended up smack dab in the middle of that location. But it's, it's not, it's not easily accessible from a main road in which we, we have commercial already available. So it wasn't something that we included in the overlay for that specific reason. But we did, we did have a lot of conversation about, you know, looking at, at Route 140 and what areas did we want to continually look at? The uses between village commercial and commercial. Specifically, I know in one of the meetings with Oregon, where we talked about warehouses and, you know, what was allowed within those areas. So, you know, I, I don't want you to think that, that we didn't have a lot of discussion on this because we certainly did. But that was the, the primary driver for the overlay being within or, or surrounding the, the properties that are on 140 is specific for commercial development.
Well, 56 is village commercial.
Right.
I, I guess I just do not understand why you would think that it would be appropriate to potentially permit marijuana to be right next to somebody's house.
I mean, really, if you, you know, you, if you look at it, there's, the way that our town is set up, I mean, there's residential properties abutting, commercial, industrial, all over town. You know, there's, so the argument again, like our primary focus was, what do we already have along Route 140 that supports commercial development? And we included those areas in there.
Without any thought to the potential effect on property values of residents?
So we, we've done some research in that area as well. Property values have, have not shown holistically. And this may not be, you know, I want to address it here, but certainly we're going to have additional information sessions. I don't know if you've seen any that we initially presented to Planning Board or the Board of Selectmen or FinCom. But we're going to host another, another planning session as well to talk about some of those items. But property values, you know, it's, it's similar to the thought that when you have a marijuana retail establishment, that your crime rate goes up. And, and those just, it's, it's not supported with evidence.
I know traffic definitely goes up.
Depending on the type of establishment, it, it most certainly can go up.
So I, I would hope that the traffic implications of locating a retail establishment would be considered. I mean, Route 140, one way each way, almost no shoulder anywhere to get around traffic that's backed up. Is that something that would be considered when you determine whether to permit a particular, apparently a particular address now? Because you're not going to re-screen when, when a place changes hands, which to me is really not a good decision, but.
So Wendy, if I can add to that, while the permitting process may not re-screen, the applicant has to go through the host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen.
I understand the applicant does.
Not just an easy transfer.
Their permit, which is for the, the physical building. And then they sell it and all you want to do is be notified. You don't want to have any say in who takes over that place of business.
That, that's the planning board process. There's, there's a separate, there's a distinct process outside of the bylaw and in the maps that takes place from perspective of applicants entering into an agreement with the town of Norton. So before the planning board. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, they would have to come before the planning board for a special permit. And traffic is, is definitely a consideration.
Okay. And, and from the, the retail dispensary perspective, Wendy, the, it's the same thing. So the retail dispensary actually has a more stringent process that they have to go through. So they have to go through an application process with a subcommittee that's put together to review. And traffic mitigation is one of the items, as well as odor mitigation, that's reviewed for that, that particular applicant. And then again, those go to the Board of Selectmen. So it's not, you know, the, the planning board has the, the permit on the site and it may change ownership. But I wouldn't say that the town is not looking into the owners because there is another process that runs in parallel, actually beforehand, because it doesn't get to the planning board unless the town negotiates a host, negotiates and agrees to a host community agreement. So even if it changed locations, they can't come to the planning board until the Board of Selectmen have, have entered into that agreement.
I, I understand that there was an issue with regard to location and that, that, that has to go through a. has to go through a permitting process again, if one wants to relocate. But if one wants to sell, are you telling me somehow somebody has to get a license from the state that they are, whatever a person that runs a marijuana establishment has to be of good standing or whatever, before they could possibly buy out somebody else that already has permit?
Yeah, so the state has a separate, it's a very stringent process. So before anybody can get a license from the state, they have to have a signed host community agreement from the town. In that host community agreement, you have to have a location. And one of the things that is required is that there's a public information session prior to the signing of the HCA. So there are many checks before that actually moves from the town and before an applicant can come into the town.
Okay, I understand applicant, number one applicant first ever for Norton. Gets approved, gets a location approved, and then some big investor comes in and wants to buy them out and get rid of them and put themselves in charge. What is the process that keeps somebody who is not above board from being the one that buys that establishment?
Well, again, the host community agreement is with the owner specifically. So if the person wants that, that establishment, they still would have to go through the same process, both with the town, through the HCA, as well as with the Cannabis Control Commission with a license.
Okay, how did I misunderstand the beginning of the, the, this subject at the meeting tonight where it was determined that there would, only if it was change, if there was more than a 50% ownership change, would there be a required notification to the Planning Board?
So, so this is a continuation from the previous public hearing? And so we were specifically just going over those items that changed from May 5th. And it's, it's kind of, it's kind of tricky too. And I, I would love to have a conversation with you afterwards and then maybe I can provide you with more information about the overall process. Because, you know, purposes of the Planning Board is specific to the bylaw and the zoning. But we have a process overall from an application process that retail establishments have to go through to the host community agreement that takes place with the Board of Selectmen. So there are other things that actually happen, but this is, this is just one piece of the process and it's, it's the, the tail end and what the Planning Board is responsible for. So I, you didn't miss anything during this call, it's just, it was a continuation from previously and it's focused on what the Planning Board has oversight on. And the CPAC had to that if.
Another board that reviews any change in ownership?
Yes.
Okay.
Renee, there's a question in the comments as well. I think we've covered it in previous sessions.
I'm just reading it now. The one from the iPhone?
Yeah.
Okay. So the comment is, what restrictions are in place about locating marijuana business with children? Not only is there a daycare center at the 123 Attabur Line Pleasant Street location, but that location also is where school-aged children get on off public school bus just before, after that Norton Public School Bus stops. That Norton Public School Bus Stop is another bus stop at the end of Noi Street. I hope I pronounced that right, I may not have. So a couple of things, and I'll talk to a piece of it and then I'll ask Denise Luciano to talk to the second piece. I believe she's still on the line. So the Cannabis Control Commission, the state has requirements that a marijuana establishment cannot be within 500 feet of a K through 12 educational facility. So there is a, if you look on 123 towards the, the middle school, there's a section, a big section actually, that's zoned industrial. It is not within the overlay because it, it is not outside of that 500 feet. And the 500 feet is parcel to parcel. So it's, there's actually a section on 123 as you're heading out of town that also is excluded because it abuts the parcel with, within the 500-foot perimeter. And then Denise, if you could talk to just the, the establishments, but the, the business is changing and, and go over a little bit of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just, just in general, like, so the, the picture of what's on along 123 and 140 today may, may not be what's there tomorrow, right? So just because it's a daycare that abuts some of the property today, tomorrow they could sell that daycare and it could become something. I'd also just like to say, like, this, this shouldn't be viewed any differently than you would view a liquor store, right? The customers come in, they go to the store, they purchase the items, they get back into their car and they pull out maybe not a social consumption location. They're not hanging around outside, you know, consuming. So it shouldn't be viewed any differently than you would view a pack of stores today.
Just to jump in as well, we're going to notice that the, the maps have been fixed on, on the website, so those should be working properly now. Do we have any further questions or comments from the public?
Good question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yes, Peter Wiggins, 157 Mansfield Ave. I live on Mansfield Avenue and Wendy, you're on 54 and that is not too far from Ma's Gas, which is President Village Commercial, which we buy, walk, provide you a lot of time. All right, thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you, Peter. Renee, were you looking for us to close this out tonight?
I, I would, I would prefer if you closed it out tonight.
I just, I know there was questions and I was going to ask you a question on the other articles as well, if you're putting your Selectmen hat.
Sure. Wait, hold on, let me go to my phone booth.
So if, if there are any further questions from the, the public? Okay. Anything to, to add from the, the Planning Board?
Steve, this is Kevin. I just wanted to, maybe it's worth an explanation to the members of the public that are on to explain the process, that our vote does not mean that it moves forward, but simply recommending it for the town meeting article. And that actual vote to approve or deny this will have another town meeting by the public. So I want to be sure everybody listening understands that.
Excellent point, Kevin, thank you. So what we would do is, I would look to close the public hearing on that and have the Planning Board take a vote, vote on whether to, to. We have to do them separately.
Steve, could you repeat that again because you went to mute during part of that?
Yeah, sorry, my internet's acting weird. We would have to do them separately, each article, I believe.
This is Tim. I would move to close the public hearing on the marijuana bylaw discussion.
This is Scott, I will say.
Chair, I just want to point out that there is a continuator, another question in chat from a person who raised the question earlier with the address iPhone. Would you like me to read it?
Uh, yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Okay, it says, "A liquor store just closed, as did a club, from the same location. What route travel signs to access the marijuana shops would be posted visibly or, visibly or online? Will GPS directions possibly encourage traffic to go through your personal neighborhoods?"
Renee, I'll take this one, give me a break.
I mean, can you, can you just read the GPS directions, please? I mean, but yeah, otherwise they send me, you could talk to our, our.
I was just going to say, I don't know what the GPS directions would be, but we did read some language in the beginning that states that if they have, read that language that we now can come through the egress, whatever, I don't want to misstate it.
I can read it, yep, yep, give me just one second, let me go to that page. Sorry, I had, I moved away. So I, I have it separately on, on what we did. So the language is in respect to, "On sites with multiple points of ingress, principal site access shall be from the more established thoroughfares to avoid disruption of residential neighborhoods." And, you know, certainly one of the things, one of the criteria when we look through, you know, as I mentioned earlier when we were talking about Route 140 was looking at these areas where, you know, there was existing commercial industrial taking places as well as the, the, the main street. So go ahead, Denise, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, access to the main roads was a, was a key consideration in choosing locations for the overlay. So we would be asking them to have their exits and entries off of the main roadways.
I mean, and I, you know, we can't answer for certain what GPS directions are going to say, but, you know, if you look at the overlay, it, it's really, it's, it's not in the center of town. You know, they're, they're essentially, I don't want to say on the outskirts completely, but on the outskirts or, or near 495. So, you know, I, I can't predict where everybody's going to come from or, or how GPS will route them, but, but certainly with them located on these main roadways, we wouldn't expect to have increased traffic through, through neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the, on the table here. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, we're going to roll call Julie. And this is to.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing, I'm sorry, on the marijuana bylaw.
Yep, yes.
Okay, Tim?
Yes.
Orrin?
Orrin is your key.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe? Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott? Scott, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Did you vote yes on that?
Yeah, sorry, I'm muted, yeah.
That's okay. And I'll vote yes, so. Six zero. So the public hearing on the marijuana bylaw is closed. Now we would need to close the public hearing on this zone, I'm sorry, in the zoning maps.
Steve, this is Julie, so moved.
Thank you, Julie.
This is Scott, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion from the board on this? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes for Orrin abstaining. Okay. And now we would.
It's Nicole, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just, I couldn't hear that for a second there. Who motioned and who seconded, I'm so sorry.
Which, which one, the zoning?
Uh, yes, the second one.
Uh, Julie motioned and Scott seconded.
Okay, same as before then. All right, thank you.
So now we would need to vote on approving these. So we take them one by one?
Steve, this is Julie. We're, we're going to move to recommend then to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the warrant article. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, the assumption is that they will be on the warrant. Our recommendation is that, or, or lack thereof, is to town meeting that we are recommending their passage. Selectmen put them on regardless of what we think. Our, our report is to the town meeting.
So Julie, do you want to revise your motion?
Okay, so I move to recommend to town meeting the marijuana bylaw amendment to Article, oh geez, what Roman numeral? IB, XV, and XXI.
Is there a second?
This is Tim, I will second.
Any further discussion, board? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Joe? Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And Orrin abstains as well. One more here, we have the, the zoning overlay. I need a similar motion.
All right, this is Julie, I'll do it again. I move to recommend to town meeting amendment to Article 3 by adding the marijuana overlay district to the zoning map.
Is there a second?
Scott. Scott will second.
Thank you, Scott. Further discussion? Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Uh, Tim?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
I'll vote yes and Orrin is abstaining. Okay. Thank you all very much for that. And Renee, I did have a question. We have, again, this is for your Selectmen hat. We have three other, I guess, articles for the Village Center Core, the Village Center Core Zoning District and the, let's see, sign requirement zoning amendments. What are, what are your thoughts on this? Do you, I know that the, that not everything was going to be pushed to town meeting. We're going to try to limit the articles this time around?
So we had discussion on limiting the articles, but we are more focused on what the town meeting date would be and setting that meeting. So I, I can't really answer with any certainty. I, I think, based on discussions, I, I think that we are going to support a limited warrant. I don't know what that looks like though. You know, my, my suggestion at this point would be to move forward as if you're going to be on the June 25th warrant and, and presenting. You know, there's still some question as to whether or not the June 25th meeting will take place, you know, depending upon what's going on with the COVID-19 environment and, you know, how we're doing as a state. So there's, you know, that could always be extended to July or August. But right now it is on for June 25th. So I, I would, my, my best recommendation is to move forward as if we're going to have that meeting with the articles. There's also some additional legislation that Lauren Goldberg spoke of at the last meeting in respect to the timing for a public hearing to when it has to be voted on at a town meeting. And she said that it's, it's going through the process right now and, you know, they're asking essentially for an extension. Because I think right now from, from the date of the first public hearing, you have 65 days to present at town meeting and have that voted on. But they're looking to extend that just due to the, the current environment. So I'm, I'm sorry, I can't provide any, any specifics, but I don't even think it's on our agenda for Thursday to go through the warrant articles. I think we're focusing more on the budget and then we'll, you know, we obviously have to do that before it's posted, but.
Yeah, our, our concern was voting on them and this is why we put it off last week. And then that they just expire only after redo the, the public hearings again. So we wanted to avoid that at the moment.
Right. And, and I don't, I, I mean, from what she said, I, I got the impression it was from the date of the first public hearing. Not that it was from the vote, but I don't know if that's the case. I think, Paul, you were on that meeting, right?
Oh, that would make it a lot different.
Right, I mean, she said a couple of things. One would be it, it was from the date of the public hearing, which right now I believe is 65 days, but there was legislation looking at moving it to six months, possibly longer. And the other thing she said that was it could, if I'm, if I was understanding it correctly, Renee, you were on it, Kevin, I know you were on it. She also made the point that at town meeting, it could get voted to go to subcommittee, which I believe then would allow, you know, help keep the applications. which I believe then would allow, you know, help keep the applications in process so we would not need to renotice them.
I, I think you mean, when she said refer back to committee, right?
Refer back to committee, sorry.
Right. And, and that was to make sure that a particular zoning item, that if it wasn't moved and determined to have no action, that it couldn't be heard again for two years. So she said we, we could, we just refer it back to committee, which means that additional action would need to be taken and then it could appear on a, a future warrant.
Uh, okay, right, right.
There's some concern about overloading this town meeting. If you wanted to keep it limited in terms of people needing to come out, or they're not adding another, once we pass this, it's my understanding, it has to be in warrant? There's no option not to put it in warrant? You're overloading that, that warrant with two different bylaw sections and basically encouraging more people to come to a meeting. I don't know if anybody had consideration for that.
So Orin, my understanding in the discussion is that the only thing that we can't remove from a warrant is something that's petitioned. So neither of these are petitions, so the Board of Selectmen could vote not to have it on the warrant. But, but again, back to what Lauren had said, she's like, we could keep it on the warrant, right? And communicate to the people that we aren't going to take action on it, we're gonna refer it back so that it can't appear in the next meeting warrant. So I, I don't know which direction we'll take with that, and that's why I said, you know, the only advice I could give now is to proceed as if it's going to be on the June 25th warrant. Just so that we're, we're ready and, and good to go.
That's consistently been the advice we've been getting, is just proceed like it's gonna happen, so. My, my, my perspective on this vote was, I, you know, we pushed it off to this meeting, I, I was kind of reluctant to do it, but, um, I mean, I think continuing to push these off is not very productive, so.
Steve, this is Joe. This, this question is to both Renee and then perhaps Paul. I, I watched a tape of the selectmen's meeting and I hope I didn't spend an hour and 45 minutes and still got it wrong. I thought, I thought the meeting after much back and forth was scheduled for the 27th, which is a Saturday.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Renee said the 25th.
Did I say the 25th? I'm sorry.
Yes.
It, it is a Saturday, yes, Joe. My apologies.
It's okay. But, but that aside, I was a little confused, but a couple of things that Lauren said. I, I read 40A, and what I read is the 65 days is the time that the, that the planning board has to schedule a hearing once a, an article has been submitted, a zoning article has been submitted. But, and, and this is why I'd ask either you or Paul to check with council, because as I read it, the, the planning board has six months after the close of the hearing to have action taken on the article itself. So that changes things dramatically. I'd, I'd never run into this where, you know, there was, there was such a delay, but as I read it, it's six months, so that shouldn't be an issue. Then the last thing, you'd have to check the charter, and I, I know that Lauren said that there was potential changes in legislation that would override a charter, but the, the article that the planning board has, the signed bylaw change methodology in the Village Course Center District, those have to go on if the planning board votes to send them to the Board of Selectmen. Under the charter, the, the selectman doesn't have an option. I don't know if the same thing applies to an appointed committee like the IDC. But nevertheless, someone ought to check to see whether we actually have a six-month window, because that changes things dramatically.
I think you can follow up on that, Joe, certainly.
Yeah, we will, I'll follow, too.
Okay. That all being said.
Um, Steve, Steve, if I could, just beforehand, because I, I do have form here.
Oh, yeah.
If I can actually just ask a member of the IDC to motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay.
Who, who is that?
Mike Nasa.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anthony Colada, sure.
Okay, I think Laura beeped it that second, Anthony. So we just have to roll call. So to adjourn the IDC meeting at 8:31 PM, Laura?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we are adjourned at 8:31.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. I, I appreciate your sort, support and collaboration through this. I know it's, it's been a long process, but, you know, we feel strongly about this and that, you know, we've, we've taken a lot of time to do it and, and we appreciate your, your input as well as your support.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Steve, did you need me for anything else?
Um, unless, my only question would be, if, if the board has any other questions on the, the selectmen's, I guess, thoughts on, I, I know you, you don't want to speak for everyone, but as far as I'm, if we should pass these, or vote on these yet. But I, I think I got your answer, so if anyone else says a question. Okay, thank you, Renee, yeah.
Great, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so next up is the Village Center Core zoning district bylaw. Did we have any, did we have any changes that we talked about before? I think everything was the same, right?
Correct. There, there are many changes.
Anyone with additional questions on this? Uh, from the planning board? All right, how about from the public? Anyone from the public with questions? Okay, so what I'm looking to do is to close up these public hearings and have votes on these tonight. So I'm going to motion to close the public hearing on this, on the Village Center Core.
And, and can you?
This is Julie, don't move.
Um, can we get clarification that there's, remember there are two amendments, warrant articles?
Yeah. Uh, Village Center Core zoning district bylaw amendment to Town Board 2, 3, is that 4, 6? X1 and XB?
This is Julie, don't move.
This is Scott.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, uh, this is Joe. Yeah, Kevin had raised an interesting point, a, a meeting or two ago. If we submit these article, again, as I, as I understand the charter, when we send this article over, the selectmen have to put it on. And given the fact that there's this, at least in past, a, a discussion about limiting the warrant, if we force the issue and the, the article is on, and to the point that Kevin had raised, notwithstanding our intent not to do anything or move the table, if someone could jump up and say, I move it, and because everyone's anxious to get out of there, the thing fails or doesn't get the two-thirds majority, I, I'm a little concerned with that. Do we really want to push this forward for, let's call it, the June, or whenever the next town meeting is, as opposed to waiting to the fall where things may be a little more calm, so to speak? Again, just thinking, I, but I thought that was an interesting point that, that Kevin raised.
From what Renee said, the, the selectmen would have the authority to, to move it or not, or to, to add it to the agenda or not. Unless it's a petition.
No, they do not. Under our charter, any article submitted by an elected board, and may even be an appointed board, I don't remember that, but I do know, any article submitted by an elected board must go on the warrant. Now, that may be overridden by legislation that Lauren was talking about possibly coming out, but, again, it just, it begs the question, are we that anxious to get this thing on a warrant now? I'm, I'm not advocating one way or another, I just, I pose the question.
Personally, I'm not anxious to get it on a warrant now. I think, I think it'll end up being pushed to the fall town meeting, but I think we do need to start cleaning up some of these outstanding issues, and, and this is definitely one of them.
But my point is, once we vote to move this forward to the Board of Selectmen, it must go on the warrant. So there's no choice. It will be printed on the warrant, and someone at town meeting, whenever that next is, can stand up and say, I move to approve, you know, whatever article it is, with the, the intent of seeing it fail, and then it's two years from now before we can visit it again.
All right. I, I'm going by the advice that we've gotten from, from Mike, from Renee, from several others, is to just proceed as if the meeting is gonna happen and, and I'll be on it, so. Anybody else like to chime in?
Well, we, we had a schedule with a bunch of planning sessions. Did we ever have the opportunity to hold those planning sessions with the butters and the businesses along the area?
Uh, no, we never had a Zoom meeting or anything. We, you know, we were in the process of doing it. I mean, we've done multiple notifications for the, the property owners. They had received a postcard back in January, February, letting them know about the, the proposed changes and to go to the website to see them, and then, or send notices for this. And I, you know, I've heard from two property owners, including Bog Iron. So they're just, but it's been out there. We've, we've, in fact, the, the first notice we sent out not only went to property owners, it went to businesses as well. Because oftentimes, they're in that area, they're, it's different, they're not always the same.
I'm assuming if we have to re-advertise, we don't have the cost associated with marijuana bylaw. The cost for this is not, is not that.
It, it, it wouldn't, and, and probably would even be less than what we had now because of, with COVID. The language we wrote at the time, we weren't sure of what was happening. And so we had to put extra language in just to say, in the event this is still happening, and, you know, we probably could scale it back a little bit more than, than what we did for this, you know, for this town meeting.
Are there any particular businesses that are really anticipating this happening and are on some planning based on it that, that would need to have a good one?
The, uh, Bog Iron. They've been, and I think Brian, when he spoke a couple, a couple meetings ago, he certainly relayed to me on a number of occasions, they really want to see that, the property in the back that had been created through the A and R for that to become this new district. So that way, it's part of their expansion, they could, they could add parking in the future.
But that's not necessarily time-sensitive?
I, I can't speak for him. You know, my, my guess is, well, I can't speak for him on that, although I know things are moving with the, you know, with the efforts to, you know, acquire that property, acquire the building. So they are in the mode of expansion.
My, my other concern is, I, I, I agree with Joe and Kevin, I mean, that's, that's an issue, but for me, it's sort of like putting two significant bylaw amendments in the same warrant, it's just overwhelming. And then, then to encourage people that might otherwise not need to come to a meeting, have to come to a meeting because it's affecting them, I think it's kind of productive for where we are. So if there's, the rest of the point doesn't perceive it, we really need to move this forward now. My sense is, you know, why don't we just hold off on doing it? And that, that, limit, limit, you know, I think the marijuana bylaw is really right, it's ready to go. There's a lot of industry, there's a lot of interest in it, and if we put that on with something else, it's just gonna overwhelm people, and I think they're gonna get frustrated if they can't go and they see so much happening at the same time.
Well, I guess my, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with it, but my, I think my counter to that is, we've seen a lot more interest in marijuana than Village Center or the other zoning amendment. We just haven't, doesn't mean that they won't show up at town meeting, but, you know, these two other remaining, or three items, just haven't had any large interest in them. I, I'd be surprised if they really did, other than a few butters nearby, but we've really only heard from two people from one property address who are opposed to it. Again, not to say it couldn't show up, uh, couldn't, people won't show up at town meeting, but my, my guess is you'll have many more, more people showing up for the marijuana proposal.
So we do have a motion and a second to close, close out the public hearing. Is there anything further on this?
Just to call everybody's attention, there is a comment from a member of the public in the chat in the Zoom meeting who says they are opposed to the change.
Okay, I'm gonna.
I'm sure there are a lot of others who said that, that you broke up.
Is that just Scott? Get up with Scott talking, there was a bad echo when Tim was speaking, so I, I'm just reading it, so.
Just, there's a comment in the chat from a resident, from, who appears to be a resident who is opposed to the change.
Okay, that's good. Sorry to interrupt you, yourself. Okay, so the motion on the table is to close the public hearing, so we're gonna go down that roll call.
Quick information, Steve, just a second.
Yep.
If we don't close the meeting, can it be kept open through the fall? Or do we have to close it and then we have to, is there a way of keeping this, not closing this meeting?
We would have to continue it to a specific date.
Okay, so.
And I don't know that, I know there's a time limit, so I don't think that we. Yeah, I don't know the date, I, I.
65-day time limit from when it opens, is that right, Joe? Or is that, it's a 60-day period?
What I read this morning, I thought it was 65 days from the close of the public hearing to town meeting. What I read, and I read, and I reread it, it looks as though, when an article comes to the planning board, the planning board has 65 days to hold a public hearing, and so close it. But after the public hearing, town meeting can take it up anytime within the next six months and still have that public hearing count. So, and that was not what Lauren said when I watched the selectmen's meeting. So as I, I asked Paul and Renee, if someone could recheck with town council to see whether we have a six-month window after this public hearing to bring up any of these zoning articles. And that's the way I read it.
Uh, Steve?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
So Joe, thanks for recognizing our concern at this meeting, and thanks for postponing this, voting till this meeting. I was hoping, to be honest with you, that we would have more substantial information after the selectmen had their meeting the other day with the town moderator and potential future town model moderators, or moderator, as well as town council. This whole discussion about the, you know, having a safe town meeting and whether the article should be on the warrant, and will that bring out budget files and otherwise would be there? Would that add to the safety concerns in the extent, extending the article until perhaps the fall town meeting? All of those discussions and decisions are made by the Board of Selectmen. So I don't want to, like, step on their toes anymore than we already have. It's really under their purview to, to be concerned with those items. Thought it's a good idea for us to bring them up. But at this point, we haven't been told any differently. And, you know, they had a quite a long meeting last week, and I was listening to it very carefully to hear from town council to see if, you know, if we should be concerned. And the town moderator spoke, and the two running, and the existing one, actually, it was one of them that's running. Nobody brought up the concerns that Joe and I and Orin just, you know, articulated. So with that being said, I, I say as an independent, you know, board, we should just go forward with our business and let the concerns of the future town meeting or meetings, you know, fall on the responsibility of Board of Selectmen where, where it does anyway.
To add to that and reiterate, I mean, all the direction we perceived is to move forward, going back weeks and weeks now, so, and I know we put it up a couple times, so. Again, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna call the roll here. Okay, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes. And that was, again, to close the public hearing. And I'll vote yes. And that was, again, to close the public hearing. Or I'll read it, uh, to close the public hearing for the Village Center Core Zoning District Bylaw Amendment to Articles Two, Three, Four, uh, VI, XI, and XV. Get in my head there, Julie, with not knowing the numbers. So, and the interest in moving forward, I, I guess I have the motion to, uh, approve. How do we want to word that?
Well, Steve, if I could, before you do that, and you may be beating a dead horse, but before we propose, I assume is the motion that you're looking for, to recommend the town meeting passage of this article, I think a more fundamental question is, do we want to exercise our right currently under the charter as the planning board to require the Board of Selectmen to put this article on the warrant? I think personally, we, we've dealt with it, we've had the public hearing, so that's out of the way. I don't see the urgency or the benefit of putting this on for the typical June town meeting. I think we put it off for October, um, and I think, uh, the public and the merits lack thereof of this article are better served.
How would we do that, Joe? By denying this, by not, by not moving forward on a motion or by?
That you would be, you're not motion. I'm sorry? Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
I, I would suggest that we make a, a motion to place this on the warrant for the fall town meeting, uh, and, and do that formally with a, a giant proviso and, and, you know, I, I like to think I can read, but, um, if in fact the article has to go on before the expiration of six months to keep the public hearing valid, then let's go forward and put it on in June. But as I said, I read it four times. And it says to, the, the way I read it, we have six months after the, after the public hearing. And I don't know whether it's the close of the public hearing or the beginning of the public hearing. Really doesn't matter because six months will put us well past October. Um, so I would, my, my, my preference would be to put this off to October unless we risk wasting, if you will, the, the, uh, public hearing process. So, um, we're meeting again next week. We can make a decision on, on whether to ask the Board of Selectmen to put it on the warrant pending town council's, uh, advice on the six-month window.
Um, Joe, I, I think we're not meeting for two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
All right, let me, let me confirm.
Yeah, it's two weeks.
June, June sixth, isn't it? Wait, wait.
Yeah.
That's next week, isn't it?
No, we're meeting the ninth.
We're meeting the ninth. It's been two weeks. We're, we're not gonna meet on the second and we're gonna meet on the ninth.
It's an upside-down six.
So I'll, I'll just kind of comment, piggyback on what Joe was saying, and, and I appreciate all those thoughts, Joe, and, and Oren, and Kevin, and I think all of us are kind of circling around these same, same feelings. Of how do we protect the process which we've been through and also bring forth the article at, at the right moment in time? And just to play, I guess, a little bit of the devil's advocate, what happens if there's a resurgence in October? And we can't hold a meeting in a similar fashion to what we are accustomed to? And we're in a similar situation to which we're in now? So I think it's really hard, I think, for all of us, obviously not knowing what tomorrow's gonna bring. And, and we're in a very uncharted territory and, and a difficult place for all of us to try and figure out what, what's best. Um, and, and I think we're, we're just kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, so. Um, although I think these are all really good points, I think I'm leaning towards at least Kevin's last sentiments of moving forward and similar to what Steve's been saying with, with what we know now, where we're at now, and, and in some ways maybe put our, our, our hope in, in the legislature and making sure that there's ways that our task work is, is gonna be held. So that's just my two cents.
So this is Scott. You know, I, I'd quickly like to just add to that, that, you know, with remote participation, if that's the venue that is selected, we may actually get better participation if people can join a town meeting from the comfort of their living rooms and homes, right? So it may actually have a broader audience than we normally would have. And it's always subject to the same conditions of passing or failing or whatever. So, you know, I thi- I think it's valuable to just kind of keep moving forward with our process and, and let the unique scenario that we're in with the whole COVID-19, you know, play its way out.
Uh, Scott, from what I heard from town council, she had mentioned this a couple times. I don't believe the actual town meeting can be done remotely. Yeah, that, that's what I've heard too.
Okay. Uh, not, not yet. I don't think they're gonna pass anything to allow it, but, um.
It's, it's all over the place, but, you know, I'm, I'm in support of just kind of moving this forward. I understand some of the challenges that comes with it.
Yeah.
But.
From, from, as far as, um, your, your point about it being all over the place, I did hear, uh, town council mentioned a few times. It, it seems like, I mean, obviously, to Joe's point, there are, you know, every town has our articles, um, or most towns, where the planning board has recommended, uh, that it be, you know, moved at the town meeting, probably months, uh, prior to today, leading up to everyone's town meeting and, um, you know, from town council's comment, the state will probably have some kind of a something to address that, whether it be leniency or a special exception this season, which will, you know, allow all towns, not just Norton, to, um, not require the Board of Selectmen to, uh, you know, to, to place and move articles based on the planning board's recommendation. I'm just saying that, don't quote me. I'm just saying town council that indicated that there are exceptions being discussed now in, um, you know, marriage is the normal process for all, all towns to take advantage of. So nothing to bank on at this point, but, you know, Norton's not the only town in this situation.
And again, all the advice we've been getting is just to move forward, move forward, move forward. That's all. Everyone's advice on this, I mean, Renee did just that here, so.
Joe, was what you said an official motion or was it just kind of stream of consciousness?
I don't think there was a motion.
Did you want to make that a motion, Joe?
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm, that was frankly thinking out loud. Uh, again, I think just for process standpoint, we've closed the hearing. Um, I, I think that we ought to have two votes. One, to place it on the warrant. Um, but I suppose we could just leave it alone and leave it to the Board of Selectmen if, um, because if we don't, don't take a formal vote, my understanding of the charter would be that, uh, it's not a petition from the boards, from the planning board, which requires the Board of Selectmen to put it on. Um, they could put it on if they felt like it, or they could not if they wanna, you know, try to limit the agenda of town meeting. Or we can take a formal vote, which would then force the Board of Selectmen to put it on.
Well, I don't think I'd want them to put it on without our recommendation that go on. We have to, we'd be on without our recommendation would be, it's our, it's coming from us anyway. So we need to be recommending at some point to, when they put it on, and if we do add to the fact. But I think that's the whole process.
Well, I, I'm simply saying that without a formal vote of the Board of the Planning Board, the article isn't formally submitted to the Board of Selectmen and therefore they are not required, although they could put it on. If we go ahead and vote to ask the Board to put it on, they are required to put it on unless there's some legislation that is, is, uh, going to be enacted that would override our charter. I mean, at, at this point, we're, you know, you know, kind of grasping at straws here in terms of the, the importance of this, but.
I feel like I've lost enough brain cells trying to figure out what's gonna happen. And we should just treat it as if it's business as usual and I think that what's been coming out of Beacon Hill has been fairly easy to follow in terms of giving people the way they need in terms of what we're doing. And we're having a Zoom public meeting, so. I don't know, that's my feeling about it. So I would, um, I would be in favor of moving this forward affirmatively.
And I should point out, I think Steve is, and he might have just returned. He did. Welcome back.
All right. That is horrible in my house. Did I miss a vote?
Okay, so I, I will make a motion to recommend the town meeting, the Village Core Commercial Zoning District Bylaw Amendment for Articles Two, Three, Four, IV, XI, and XV.
Second.
Kevin, that was you with the second?
Yeah.
Ready? Okay, any further discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Oren?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you, Julie. Um.
We also need to move the second part of that, right?
Yeah, I lost everything. I'm trying to pull it up now. Do you want to read that, that one, Tim?
Well, we got, we gotta close the public hearing for that one as well, if we're doing, if we're taking them one by one.
Um, what was that next one? Can somebody read that? I don't have, I'm trying to pull it up now.
Okay, I, I, I motioned to close the public hearing for Amendment Article Three by adding the Village Center Core Zoning District to the zoning map.
Is there a second?
This is Scott. Scott will second.
Okay, but before we do the roll call vote, is there anyone from the public that has any comments on this? Okay, uh, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah, sorry, my screen got blocked.
Oren?
Yes.
Uh, Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Okay, likewise, we need to, we need a motion to approve this.
Recommend it, recommend it to town.
Recommend it.
This is Tim.
This is Julie.
This is Julie. I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Uh, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Oren?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin? And Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Uh, and again, that was, uh, to amend Article Three by adding the Village Center Core Zoning District to the zoning map. Now that I finally get everything back up on my computer, run the last one. Um, commending Article, was it Twelve? To clarify, uh, meaning of amendment and delete sign requirement for zoning amendments. Um, I think that was pretty straightforward. Is there any, uh, questions or discussion on that one? All right, so, um, I guess I'll look for a motion to, uh, to close the public hearing.
This is Julie. Don't move.
Okay, and a second?
Second, Oren.
And if you are, uh, okay, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Oren?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin? Kevin?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. And now, uh, I guess we're looking for a motion to recommend Article Twelve to clarify the meaning of amendment and delete sign requirement for zoning amendments.
This is Julie. Don't move.
Julie, you can have that also.
Cool.
Okay, Julie, and then Tim, okay. Uh, okay, uh, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Oren?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Feels like we did a lot of housekeeping there. All right, um, does, uh, Paul, do you have anything else for tonight?
Uh, no, that's all. And in fact, tomorrow I will work on the, uh, the report that goes to the select board. Uh, I will get it to the town manager and will include all of the votes that you all made tonight.
Um, and did everyone sign those pages, uh, that Paul supplied before, after the last meeting and send them in?
This is Scott. I have mine signed. I'll be dropping it off tomorrow.
Yeah, we, we really, we could use them. Uh, we have a few so far. And, and Julie, you said you had dropped yours off?
Yeah, I dropped mine off in the, in the little, you know, the slot outside town hall.
Okay, we'll have to check that. I, I didn't, I was there today. I didn't see it and Nicole said she hadn't seen it, so.
All right, well, if you guys don't see it, let me know and I'll, I'll redo it.
Okay.
I'm going there tomorrow, Paul, so I'll check it.
Okay.
All right, so Nicole, after you check, let me know. And if not, I can print it out and, you know, get it over, you know, within a day.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that they just didn't check the, the box when Paul was there, but, um, I'll double check tomorrow.
Paul, I'm away, but I'll be back Thursday and, uh, I'll, I'll get it done.
Great.
And I said, Paul, I'd sent you mine electronically. Do you need the hard copy urgently or?
Yeah, that would, that would be preferable.
Yeah, they needed the originals.
Okay, well, then I will be by soon.
All right, uh, anything else, Paul? All right, I guess one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Oren and Joe, uh, just got back to the chair, okay. Julie?
Yes.
So yes, and Tim?
Yeah.
Oren?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, everyone, again. Two weeks from now.
Thank you all. Thank you.